Well, now I'll call this meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who will be, who is viewing the meeting on G10 television. And we're going to start tonight with a pledge made by Councilmember Randy Thomas, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Corr. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we pause this evening to give you thanks for this most beautiful, warm, delightful day that you so graciously bestowed upon us. And for all the care and the benefits and the love that you bestow upon us individually and upon us as members of this, the city of Jacksonville. We continue to pray for all those affected by the COVID pandemic, whether it be physically, financially, mentally, and pray that your care and comfort would be with them. We give thanks for tonight, especially for our essential workers, especially our fire, police, and others who, in this time of a pandemic, continue to serve, continue to put themselves on the front line to serve others. Bless them and keep them safe, keep them well. We also have to pause this evening to remember those folks in Brunswick County who suffered such a devastation last night with the tornadoes, the loss of life, the injuries, the property damage. Please be with them and to comfort them as they rebuild their lives. And as always, give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, we received a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Salute.
Second. Have a motion second. Any comment? All in favor, say five. I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the minutes and consent items. Well, first off, we've got a section of public comment. And we have one speaker sign up to speak. Mr. Oliver Ford. Sir, if you will, please take your, if you don't mind lifting your mask while you're speaking so we can hear you better. And also, if you would state your name and your address for the clerk.
Sir, my name is James N. Hargrave. I live at 116 King Street in Jacksonville. Been living there for about 37 years. I'm not sure the total subject is about the roads and the driveway within Jacksonville or in Bell Fork Homes. Certainly, I lived there many, many years and appreciate the way it's grown and all the violence and all this way down. I raised my children there and I've enjoyed living there. The problem I've seen, though, far as the roads coming in and out and the back road of Bell Fork Homes, I believe I could say for sure, maybe about five or six years ago, they came in and far as, I believe it was drains. They came in and smoked or cleared them out. And from that point, it just started to sink everywhere throughout the Bell Fork housing area. And I was just kind of been hoping, whatever you all intended to do, that the roads would come out and get fixed. Some of the people have come from the city. They are in charge of certain streets. They have came out there and kept patching it up over the years and continue to patch it up. But I think the way that place has grown, my home, I'm even looking to improve my home even more. But I do believe that the roads definitely coming out of the in, in and out of the area, really something needs to be done. Even when they patch it up, it's just seemed to sink again. Like I say, I've enjoyed living out there. I continue to plan on living out there and improve my home. But I believe the roads, the other good thing I can say, it did bring some, we had a lot of flooding going on throughout Bell Fork. And I knew a storm would come, the switch would come to Bell Fork Homes, they're going to turn it off, whatever the grid was. But seeing like that, it's improved. I've seen them build the pumps to pump out the water. I got a drain off in the back of my home. And I could certainly say this is, it's been good, great. A lot of the inmates have come back doing work back there and gutting it out. It's been raining a lot, so I do know it's holding. But those pumps seem to pump the water out of the Bell Fork Home area. And I think that's a good thing for us out there. So I do believe that we are one of the folks, of course, there's a lot of places, but someone should come out there and do a little bit stronger and a better job as far as the roads throughout, throughout the Bell Fork area. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. We're going to be covering, I was going to say having some conversation on the street paving this evening. It'll be the second item. And you're welcome to, because of the limited number of people we can have in here at one time, you're welcome to watch it out there. They've actually cut the sound up and all, so if you want to, right out there, right there in the hallway.
Yeah. Hold on one second.
Second, sir.
Thing we, we were talking about, because one of the issues was the ditch that comes between Carver Road and King Street. There's been a lot of flooding as a result.
Yes, sir.
Back there. So one of the options that the city manager and we talked about was the possibility of doing a cleanup between, with the city and, for the neighborhood and other volunteers. So, and we could talk further about that, city. Dr. Woodruff, if you would like, try to figure out what we can possibly do in that direction to start.
I do believe the area is growing. They came out there and did some additional building, but that area in the back of, matter of fact, back of my home, I've seen it flood all the way up to about a foot from the back end of my property. But nevertheless, there's, on a real bad day, and I saw the pumps, so I was, I was thinking that maybe that had cut down. But there is a lot of foliage that falls back in there and definitely during the summer far as mosquitoes and everything. I'm really hoping that they do something back there because it's growing. I enjoy living out there. It's quiet. We do a lot of, you know, odds during the day. I can almost tell you, pretty much the police department probably know my name pretty well. If you come walking up Bell Fork Homes throughout that area, and if I don't particularly know you, I'll be on the phone in five minutes. I got so-and-so, so-and-so walking, has such, such clothes, and I just need them checked out because it's a lot of good people and older people live back there. And as far as our neighborhood watch, like I said, the police department know, pretty much know me pretty much well. I'll call. Because like I say, I enjoy to live there and try to keep neighborhood watch going on out there.
Good deal.
And my mentor last day, Mr. Cobb's, he's my block mentor. And with him, you know, he tells us a lot of things that's going on. So I really do hope that you look at, you know, Bell Fork Homes because I believe in it. I believe where I live. I see the police out there quite a bit driving through for our safety. And if I thought it was anything different, I'll move away.
Dr. Woodruff, can we, gets the streets department to maybe look at the section?
Let me give you all an update. I know normally in the public comment, we don't, but I think it's important for this gentleman to know and for you to know. We anticipate in March or April of this year, meaning a month to two months away, issuing a bid award so that King Street?
King.
That King Street will be completely resurfaced. Now, Cole, which is the entrance road.
Yes, sir.
It, it doesn't need asphalt. It needs new water and sewer lines. And the problem there is we're, we are scheduling that, going to try to get it in next year's budget, meaning the budget that starts July 1st of this year. But we don't want to do anything in the way of coal until we get the road resurfaced that's further in the neighborhood. Because obviously, you know, just logically, you don't want to put down new asphalt and then have all heavy trucks and everything run over it. So our pledge to you and to the council is that bids are going to be received in March or April, meaning next month or the following month.
Yes, sir.
And you should see within 90 days after that bid, so sometime this summer, you should see King Street completely resurfaced. Because I've been on it, Wally's been on it, some of the council members have been on it. That, that road has basically disintegrated. The council this year authorized an extra million dollars out of the savings account of the city. And that's one of those roads that we have moved up because of its condition. So you will see that. I don't want to mislead you, though. Cole is at least one year away. And that's going to be, you folks are really going to have, I'll say, an interesting time because we're going to have to dig up the whole street, put down new water and sewer lines, at least in that first block to two.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, you may want to park your car over at Wooton Park and drive out that way while we're doing the construction.
Get through on Armstrong Street, you know, but.
That's true.
There'd be a great sight to see. Those homes are good back there.
Yes, they are.
A lot of folks come in and out. And like I say, I think it was only about three or four houses back there on King Street when I came and built my home back there. And I built it again. So I know those homes back there are really worth it if you come out there and see it.
That we have ditch situation he was talking about.
Well, currently, we have not done any ditch work since the start of the COVID. And the reason why is because we do jail inmate labor. And since the COVID, we no longer get any inmates from the jail. And that jail is not the local jail. It's the state prison. Whenever we are able to get inmates back, then we will try to schedule some work in that area. But I cannot tell you today when that will be. It may be a month, it may be a year before we're able to get inmate labor back.
Yeah. I also like to say too, I've been, I've just retired again for an Department of Corrections. Also retired for the Marines. And yes, I've seen many, many times, they'll come through and the council that we had in Bell Fork Homes, they got along with you folks. And they would come back out there and dig it out and lay down the mosquito balls or whatever to help, you know, prevent the mosquito really, really building up back there in the back end of King Street. So really, really thumbs up. I've watched you guys on TV, so certainly I appreciate that you guys have focused on King Street. It is a great street to live on. And we get a lot of compliments from people out there because they do put something in their homes.
Is the, the ditch behind your house on King Street, is that flowing now?
I think, I take it to granted that maybe those pumps that you put behind the seafood place at the end of Hargis Street in Bell Fork, and then there's another pump station in the back in our playground, recreation area of Bell Fork Homes. And then you have another one further down on Bell Fork Road going towards 24. I watched y'all build them. And from that point on, it seemed like everything was draining, draining out far as the streets. And I was, I'm not, not, not engineer, but I thought that's what was happening with, with, you know, the pumps that you put in. I started seeing the drains running out. We just have one, I think it's, I'm not sure if it's Cole Street, but it's the face of my home, it would either be the right end. There's one area there, I make a left coming out, a right coming out of Bell Fork Homes. There's a drain right there, but it needs, I don't know, maybe to grave it just about an inch because the water, you got a runoff for the sewage right there. But it builds up because either the, has to be lowered or maybe just take some of the concrete that runs, that you have far as the edge, point it down a little bit lower towards the drain off. That would take care of that because this is out there, I think, even as we speak, since we had a lot of water in the past few days, past week.
I would think an appointment with Mr. Hargrove, is it Hargrove or Graves?
Hargrove.
Hargrove.
Yeah, H A R.
I'll make an appointment with him within the next several days to get out there and let him show me specifically the areas. If you'll write down your telephone number for me.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry, appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could add to that, I've looked at the drainage network in Bell Fork Homes several times. One of the challenges that we have is most of the ditches in that area are city maintained. But there is in particular one that's between King Street, it's, it's behind Homes, it's between King Street and, is it Carver? Between King Street and Carver. Houses front King Street and houses, Homes front Carver. And there's a backyard ditch that does not receive any city runoff. It's all backyard runoff. And the challenge there is some residents do a great job of maintaining their section of ditch. And some residents do not do a good job of maintaining their section of ditch. And the challenge there is it's all private property and it doesn't receive any city drainage, so we are not able to maintain that stretch of ditch. And that's probably been one of the, the largest challenges for runoff in the King Street area. We do a fairly good job of keeping, keeping the other ditches maintained, as Dr. Woodruff said. We've really had a lot of challenges getting inmate labor. We have shifted some of our maintenance workers and some of their responsibilities to try to continue maintaining ditches. But we cannot do it at the same level that we have been doing it in the past because of manpower.
Thank you. Thank you, Val.
Mr. Hargrove will be in touch with you.
I have, I believe the street captain, Mr. Cole, or Mr. Cobb's?
Just a.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank everybody.
Ask you.
Yes, sir.
I was going to talk and mention you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you a lot, Mr. Hargrave. Concerning Cole Drive, is there, how much would a temporary patch? What can we do at, because Cole Drive is really bad as you exit out coming onto Hargis Street.
We'll be happy to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Carmen, is this Oliver Ford still here?
I believe we have another gentleman who wanted to also speak. Good to see you again.
Good afternoon.
Would you please give your name and address to the clerk?
Yes, indeed. My name is Linwood Cobb, address 131 King Street. At the present time, I'm the president of Bell Fork Homes Association. And I overheared some of the comments from Mr. Hargrave, my neighbor down the street. And I, I just want to reinforce, reiterate some of the things that he said. And the last statement was made by, I think this gentleman and I, we talked before over the fence about cleaning the ditches. I was told that that property belongs to us to clean the ditches. But I keep my area clean. But I'm 70 years old. Lots of people older than I can't do cleaning a ditch. So where do we meet, is the question I presented to him. And did I overhear that the state owns some of that property or somebody else? How do we, how do we work that out?
I think the, first of all, private property is never maintained by the city. There is not a solution for backyard ditches that do not belong to the public. That's not the answer that this gentleman would like to hear. It's not the answer you'd like to hear. If you change your policy and direct that the city start maintaining these, then I'm going to tell you, there are hundreds of these all over the city. The best thing to do is what Mr. Jackson and I have talked about before. And that's having a volunteer workday where it's not city crews in there. It's not the city accepting the responsibility, but it's people who are willing to give up a Saturday morning to go in and sweat and get dirty and clean it out. That's the only way that the ditches that we're talking about here are ever going to be maintained is by private citizens. Now, you as the council can set the policy. If y'all decide at a future date, you'd like for us to show you a workshop of all of the ditches, but it's like your children. What you do for one, you got to be ready to do for all. And that's why, as I've told Mr. Jackson in previous conversations, the only solution that I can give as the manager, under the policies that are currently adopted, is to find volunteers who will go in there. And I'm sure this gentleman, Mr. Cobb, would be willing to work side by side with me and others on some Saturday morning to do it. But that ditch, that area that we're talking about behind those houses is not city responsibility. So the only way it's going to happen is with volunteers, unless you change the city policy.
I'm going to mention something. One of the issues, and a lot of folks didn't know it, is that, because when Jacksonville was a whole lot smaller, there were some folks that came through and from the city that actually cleaned it at one time. So there was a misunderstanding that it wasn't a city maintained ditch. The other issue is that we never understood why it wasn't one because all the other ones were. And then even the one behind King Street, but something happened when they build that. I don't know what, what reason or what happened. It was way before. Probably anybody was on the council when it happened, but it was, it's the only one that's not the city ditch. So just wanted to use a little additional information about that.
And Brian, if I may say so, in, in the past, I bought 131 King Street in 1984. And over that timeframe, I've seen inmates and, and come in, the city would bring inmate crews in and work. And I know that that's different situation, different things happen. But what happens when you have the responsibility of an older person trying to clean out a ditch and get hurt in the ditch? Okay? Or get bit by a snake, moccasins in the ditch, they're in there. So who then is responsible? Even though I volunteer, because I did the parks and trailway thing a while back, and the same situation arose. If I were to slip down there, the moccasin bite me, who's responsible? So we had to sign a waiver that we were, not going to sign a waiver anymore like that. So it brings up one problem on top of another problem. And whatever you can do for Bell Fork Homes would be greatly appreciated by all the people of Bell Fork Homes.
All I will say is this, I don't like moccasins any more than you do. And that's why when I do ditch work, I like for it to be in the cold winter.
Hey, yes, sir.
And also, there's not as much foliage, so you can see a whole lot.
Well, there's a lot of foliage in the ditches. That the, my street, farther up the street, I've called the city numerous times. And there's a tee that crosses over to Carver Street. And there was a five gallon bucket that came downstream and was whished in the crossover. So water backed up behind Mr. James Turner's house. It was just deep in the back of his yard.
Has that been pulled out?
They came in and got the bucket out. So that street, that, that section needs periodic looking at. There's a lot of little tees that cross that needs to be unplugged. So I thank you for your time, letting us express our concerns. I did overhear about the entrance to Hargis Street off onto Cole Street. King Street, as usual, is just crumbly. Okay? And, and whatever you can offer us, provide for that area would be greatly appreciated.
You should see King very shortly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Dr. Woodruff, maybe at some point in time, we could get some clarification on what's private and what's, what the ditches the city actually can be involved in. You know, I understand the whole thing about, you know, using public assets on private property. That's not good practice. It's not, that's not.
We'll do a, we'll set up a workshop on your ditch maintenance.
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen, ladies.
Your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Oliver Ford. My address is 311 Brentwood Avenue, Jacksonville. Is that good?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay. Now, why I'm here to address is Jacksonville Police Department. Not sure if any of you have heard my story, but it started like this. And it's a long story, so what I'm planning on doing is addressing some of it tonight, go over it, overview, and then come back and get into more details. Anyway, before December 3rd, 2018, if you said somebody did something in the community and they were arrested or beaten by the police or something, I would have said, well, what did they do? Because that's the kind of person I was. On December 3rd, however, about 8:00 PM, my daughter was in an accident over in New River. Where New River and Hargis Street meet, that's where they were. When I approached, when I came on the scene, Officer Barton of the Jacksonville Police Department was there. And I made my rounds, make sure everybody was fine and so forth. Anyway, when I walked up on Officer Barton, he was telling my daughter to, what I perceive as sign a blank form, as far as the accident is concerned. However, I had a few words with Officer and I told my daughter never to sign a blank form and so forth. The officer walked away and I continued to chastise my daughter about signing the blank form. And then I started to help her fill the form out that he gave her. He said he was just telling her to sign it after she finished filling it out. However, and I only have three minutes, so however, make a long story short, he came back. He says, "I smell marijuana on your breath." He called me over, I talked to him, I said, I had a few choice words for him because all my life I was told, "I don't do drugs, I don't drink, I don't do any of that stuff." So anyway, he said, "I smell like marijuana." He proceeded to call for backup. I told him he was full of it, gave him a few choice words. He called backup. Backup came, they put me in cuffs and so forth and so on. I asked for supervisor. They, after they roughed me up a little bit, it was a female cop there. I forgot her name, but I'm sure that'll come out to me eventually. They roughed me up, put me in the back of a car and took me to jail. Asked for supervisor. Supervisor came, gave him a few choice words because I was in the car, cuffs were too tight. They arrested me, threw me in the car, took me down to the station. When I was there, magistrate asked, "What did he do?" He said, "Well, it got me for possession and resisting arrest." I'm a somewhat of a smart Negro. So after I left jail, they booked me and so forth. After I left jail, went straight to the hospital, couple hours later, took a drugs test, and of course, it was negative for everything. So he couldn't have possibly smelled marijuana on my breath. Anyway, that was the story. That's how it all began, and it's still going on to this day. And when I have more time, I will go into more details as to what took place after that moment.
Mr. Ford, I believe that you and I have already discussed this probably months ago.
Yes.
And I will let the council know that I had the chief of police do an internal investigation. The internal investigation, I do not know the outcome of it. I'll be happy to check. I'll also be happy to set up a meeting with Mr. Ford and with the chief of police. Mr. Ford can certainly come back and testify to you.
Can I interject?
Yes.
What took place with that? The chief of police said that the results of the drug test that they did on what they found to be residue, the officer said, in the car, he said it was positive. However, when we went to court, they dropped the drug possession charge because I know it wasn't positive. I don't do drugs. There was no drugs in my car. They dropped that charge and now they had me on resisting arrest for a crime they made up. Any other question?
Thank you for coming in. Like the manager said, he will look into it. He will contact the chief. Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Whatever. I said, "Thank you." Oh, oh, thank you. Y'all, you gentlemen, ladies, have a good evening.
Good to see you, sir.
It's 2018, Dr. Woodruff.
I'm sorry?
18.
I don't.
December 3rd, 2018.
When I met with Mr. Ford, though, was last year, in 2020.
John, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our discussion topics for this evening. Wait a minute, I'm forgetting something here.
Adoption of minutes.
Adoption of the minutes and the consent items. And we have a February 2nd, 2021 regular workshop meeting. And we have four consent items on the agenda. Now, uh.
Moved option of the minutes and consent items.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Here and now on paper.
Signify by, say it, I?
Aye.
So first discussion topic for this evening is the FY22 major budget topic on recycling. Do you have some information for us on that?
Yes, we do. Mayor and council, thank you very much for the time tonight. Over the next several workshops, we will be discussing some of the, what I'll call, larger or major budget challenges that we're going to face with the FY22 budget. As you know, we have to have the budget adopted by June the 30th. Some of the topics, though, are going to be, I think, very thought provoking. And tonight, we're gonna begin with two. Recycling contract, and then, of course, paving city streets. You've met Michael before. Michael Connors is a retired Marine, a wonderful servant to this country. He served, what, 22 years?
Twenty, twenty and some change, sir.
Pardon me?
Twenty and some change.
Twenty and some change as a Marine. Uh, since Michael has come, Kerry Terrell has mentored him. Kerry is now our Assistant Public Works Director. Michael is now the Sanitation Superintendent. And between the two of us, we're gonna talk to you about the challenges that we're going to be facing with recycling. So to start off, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, quickly, I just want to go over sanitation. And some of you may be familiar with all the services. Some of the people at home may not. So we're just gonna cover the services offered. I'm gonna go over the overview of the infrastructure of the division, uh, talk about some of the budget history, uh, the FY22 financial challenges that are gonna really kind of dictate, uh, the budget that we're asking for. The new recycling proposal that's coming up in the contract, which I know we've talked about, uh, over the last couple of years that I've been here, uh, well, it's, it's now at the gates. And, um, options and recommendations, I think Dr. Woodruff will jump in and steal the show there. So as we move on here, um, as we know, sanitation service, what do we do? Number one, 1.8 million calls to service annually. Start with that. Uh, we, we service roughly 12,000 customers every week, sometimes twice a week. Uh, this city collects 630 tons weekly of materials and remove them from our city streets. Household waste, we know we collect that. Recycling, those both are done on a weekly basis. City of Jacksonville is fortunate to still have weekly service on recycling. Uh, a lot of the outlying areas do not. It's, uh, biweekly, some places monthly. Uh, yard waste, you know, if it's not a holiday, uh, we're in there doing yard waste every week, uh, whether it's, it's, it's heavy or light. Luckily, I think tomorrow, we're gonna be fortunate, thanks to the rain. The board will be happy with that. Uh, you know, we, we do bulk waste, appliances, electronics, pallets and tires. All that's free of charge to our citizens. It's included, uh, in the small fee we pay now, which is, uh, again, services that you're not gonna find outside of this city. Uh, how do we do that? Uh, I do that, uh, to most people's surprise. I have 33 people on residential. That's it. Thirty-three people pick up 630 tons of material and all those other services offered. On my commercial side, uh, we have five commercial drivers. Uh, and they, I call them my vampire crew. They're out there at 2:33 in the morning, collect everything, take care of all of our commercial customers inside the city. We do this, we have seven commercial trucks. Uh, I know you're all familiar with those. We talked about those last year. And you guys were grateful enough to help us, uh, kind of up our ERP program on those. Uh, we have three grapple trucks. Uh, those are the workhorses of sanitation. You see them out everywhere. They pick up everything from bulk items, service our apartments with, uh, commercial debris removal, and of course, yard waste. Also, with the hurricane season, those three grapple trucks are vital to cleanup. Uh, six automated trucks, uh, those are known somewhat as the one-armed bandits throughout the city. Uh, we have six of those. Uh, we're, we're trying to increase more automated routes. Obviously, it cuts down on personnel. Uh, it just has to kind of do with the construct of that neighborhood if we can actually use automated collection in the area. Um, and then, of course, we have the 11 traditional rear-loading trucks uh, that are servicing, uh, most of your neighborhoods and the recycling. Out of those trucks, just so you know, equipment costs with sanitation. Uh, and of course, please tackle me if you, if you have any questions or comments. Um, automated truck, uh, I just want to let you know that five out of the six automated trucks that we have are 2013 or older. Uh, we have one truck slated to be purchased, uh, in this FY22, uh, budget year. And those trucks coming to cost almost $300,000. Uh, as you know, they're, they're aging. The, the commercial sanitation equipment, uh, does not really form to, uh, the, you know, the longevity of the ERP plan that we like to have. Uh, so our, our costs go up on that. Our rear loaders, uh, three out of 11 of those, we've been doing a really great job, uh, replacing those and getting that fleet newer, or at least, uh, within the three years. Uh, but three of those out of 11 are also over seven years old. Uh, grapple trucks, uh, those workhorses right there. Two of them are eight years old, the other one's not, not much newer. Uh, we have one of those slated to be purchased. Uh, if, if we can pull that off in FY22, uh, we may have to push it out depending on, you know, budgetary constraints. But, uh, those are there. Uh, the two-ton dump trucks, the Diala Truck Program, which I know a lot of you are familiar with, uh, those trucks. Uh, two of those are 2019 because they just got purchased. And, uh, and one is a 2012. Uh, the other big cost that we have is household waste containers. And we have 13,000 roughly throughout the city, uh, costing us close to $60 a container. Uh, and then we have recycling containers is 12,000 of those, uh, at $52 a container. Sanitation budget, and you guys may be familiar with this, but, uh, the residential service, uh, that operating budget is $3.8 million, just north, north of that. Disposal is another $2 million. As you know, the disposal fee went up, uh, for us off of historical tonnage. It's gonna be almost close to 200,000 that we're gonna go up this year due to Onslow County, uh, raising the disposal rates. That rate is transferred directly to the residents. Uh, our commercial service budget there, 1.6, almost 1.7 million, uh, to run the Commercial Enterprise Fund. So total budget for sanitation right now, just north of $7.5 million. How do we pay for that? Um, obviously, we have the general fund transfer. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, uh, coming up, which really drives this conversation. Um, residential fees, as we talked about, residential fees right now sit at $16. That's a $10 charge for service, which is subsidized through the general fund. And then the $6 charge, which is, covers disposal of not only your trash, but the yard waste as well. Small business fees, those come in slightly higher rate, same breakdown, and then the commercial fees. And as you know, our commercial fees are done by having a service fee per dump, and then the disposal charge per the capacity of the container. Uh, just some revenue sources on the, uh, transfer. General transfer, fund transfer historically has been 1.8 million. That's what it was this year FY21. $1.8 million to subsidize the residential commercial, uh, the residential, uh, trash. Uh, residential fees, as we talked about, $16 a month. See the breakdown there again. Small business fees, just $1.25 more to our small businesses. And they, of course, have the option to multiply up to four cans, where residential is held at two containers per household. Uh, and then our commercials fees, we do, it's, it's a hybrid of the $7.70 per tip. So every time the truck shows up and tips you, basic service being at two times a week. So any commercial customer is paying at least $15 for their commercial service fee. And, and that's a weekly. And then, of course, we add the disposal into that depending on the capacity of the dumpster. Frequency, obviously, uh, they have the option to go from two times to up to five, six times a week. All right, so if there's no questions on that, I think everyone's pretty clear on, on what we do in sanitation. Great, uh, we'll jump into the challenges of FY22. Uh, the number one thing that we've finally gotten done is the Sunoco recycling contract. Uh, and we'll get into that in detail here. And then, of course, I touched on it a little bit with equipment costs, maintenance costs due to the aging fleet, and service to new developments. We've had a lot of growth in the city. We have a lot of planned growth in the city for residents. Uh, those are gonna boom up, and we're gonna have to take our routes that are kind of almost out their max capacity and generate new routes. So that's all gonna come with a cost to the city. Moving into that, I'd like to just kind of talk about the Sunoco contract. Again, I'm, I'm gonna do a little re-education with this. It, it can get a little tricky on how recycling is gonna be billed to the city. Uh, this is new because for 10 years, we've enjoyed no fees on recycling. And, uh, that's been great. But as we all know with the news, since 2018, recycling role has changed. So getting into that, our current Sunoco contract expires November 1st of 2021. So come that time, we have to start paying for recycling. Uh, cost for disposal right now, since 2011, has been $0. Uh, the cost has been to the city for the service, for the containers that we discussed earlier, and any fees that would have come from contaminated loads, which luckily, the City of Jacksonville has a great recycling stream, so we haven't had to experience that. And of course, the city charged the customers is zero. We haven't passed on any of those service fees. Uh, that's all come from and been covered by the subsidy from the general fund. Uh, before Sunoco, just a little history there. Before Sunoco, the city used private collectors, uh, to collect and dispose of the material at the, uh, receiving facility up there, co-located with the Onslow County landfill. And the charge to citizens at that time was $2.18 per month. And that was, again, the service and the disposal. And that was roughly 20 years ago. So the proposed Sunoco recycling contract after November 1st, 2021, and we'll get into what has been somewhat agreed upon, obviously, waiting for your approval and Dr. Woodruff's. Uh, right now, we, we don't know what that cost per ton's gonna be. Well, I have an idea, and if you agree to it, we'll be good. Uh, but it fluctuates. And that's one of the key points here with the recycling markets. It's a commodity, and they bill as a commodity. So it's a fluctuating price. And the charge to customers is gonna be the decision that you all need to make at the end of this. Uh, what are we gonna do to cover this cost? Uh, drastic recycling market change in 2018 led to major price increases across the nation. Uh, it's so much so that Sunoco had come to us, even though our contract had not expired, and really asked us, uh, I, I would say begged us to get out of our contract and form a new contract where we would actually pay them money. It was a hard no. We're not gonna pay them money that we don't have to pay them. And we continued on enjoying the contract that we've had since 2011. The time has changed. And now, the markets have started to recover slightly. And, uh, we're seeing somewhat of a, a benefit for us as far as the cost is gonna be per ton. Now, we don't really have a choice to not recycle. Uh, I mean, ethically, it's the right thing to do. We need to recycle. Uh, you know, we need to follow the three Rs. We need to reduce, we need to recycle, we need to reuse. And we're doing that. Uh, but now that we come to this challenge where this infinite cost is gonna come up here, we need to look at our options. One of those options was, do we cut back? Do we not recycle? Do we abandon recycling? Do we go back to, do we try to go to some sort of hybrid? Uh, we all know that what doesn't go in the recycling can every week will just end up in the trash stream. Problem with that is, is it violates the state law. Uh, North Carolina statute listed up there prohibits the disposal of plastic bottles, aluminum cans, uh, beverage containers from any of our ABC permit holders, which are all your bars, your restaurants, everything else, uh, and numbered rigid plastics, you know, the one through five and number seven. So prior to that, the real onus kind of fell on the landfill. Uh, they were the ones that were gonna be inspected, and they were gonna feel the brunt if they didn't police themselves. Now, because of the recycling market crash and everybody abandoning recycling, the governor put out a new, uh, addendum to that that said, hey, look, now the landfills have the option to ban the generators. The City of Jacksonville is a generator of trash. So if we were to violate this consistently, they could ban us from use of the landfill. So obviously, we don't want that. So what do we have to do? We have to recycle. Uh, we're doing a great job in the city recycling. Um, if it wasn't for, uh, the large conglomerates coming in, we would probably be the biggest, uh, user to the Sunoco Murph located up by Onslow County landfill. Um, we're doing 2,500 tons of, of great recycling material a year, which is great for them. Uh, it's how they source their revenue. They're a private company, they sell that on a market. Um, as you know, the City of Jacksonville has been number four in the state for the cleanest recycling stream. So our residents are doing a great job. They're bought into the recycling program. They're doing a great job. Prior to me, Kerry Terrell did a big push on recycle right, and that has resonated through the years. And I've enjoyed that benefit of the residents being knowledgeable and, uh, educated on, on what can go in those cans and what can't. And that's kept us, uh, uh, holding that standing of number four in the state. 1,900, just if you look at the breakdown there, residential does the most. Commercial right now does a small amount at 400. Uh, and small business does another 200 tons. Again, none of these people are paying any fees for recycling at this time. Uh, so here's the proposed Sunoco contract that, uh, we've gone back and forth on for almost two years now. Uh, and what we got to is, and understand that this falls in line, it's actually some better service prices than what our sister cities are getting. So what we'd enjoy, starting November 1, when our contract ends, we would pick up a charge of, and this would be our baseline service charge. And again, please stop me because this can get confusing. Dr. Woodruff still doesn't like it, and we had to somehow dance around it. So here it is, the best way we could explain it. $95 is our service charge. And what's gonna happen is, Sunoco, well, not Sunoco, but the, the market, the southeast region of the recycling market, will dictate monthly what the cost, what the, what the market value of a ton of recycled materials are. And we will pay $95 less that weighted average price, which is the WAP you see up there. And we will enjoy that for the first eight to nine months of our contract until we hit FY23. Once we roll into FY23, we will increase to a $100 service charge. Now, that's not what we're paying. We're gonna pay that less, the weighted average price, which is on the rise, luckily. So as you can see, it increases $5 every year, going down until 2026. So this is good for us because we really wanted to forecast and know what we had to budget for. You know, so this is really your worst-case scenario. If the market were to fall out of recycling again and go back into the negative numbers, where it's been for the last, you know, two years, uh, this is what we have to pay. And we needed this cap. And what we have pretty much negotiated right now is that no time do we pay more than this for that year. And I, I think that's very important. Uh, if the revenue share was to grow greater than our service charge of any year, Sunoco has to pay us a 40% profit share. Now, that's never gonna happen. We all know that. It's, uh, it hasn't happened in the past. The same number was in our, uh, in our 10-year contract from Sunoco. If they, of course, they were a lot stronger in the markets there, and that, uh, threshold number was 120. We never got a check, so I wouldn't expect one in the future. I think that the recycling is gonna, if we're lucky, get up to $60, $70 on the market price over the next four, three or four years. And we'll enjoy the reduced number to that. I don't see it ever climbing to this number. If it does, well, then we get some money. Any questions on that? No, all right. So the weighted average price, what is that? The weighted average price is the market value of recycled material. Each product that goes into a commingled stream has a value, and they sort that, separate that, and they sell that value. So we get this hybrid price, and this is just an example, this is not what it is right now, but this is where they come up with that weighted average price. And we would have to, this would change monthly, and this is how it is really everywhere up the east coast. Right now, the city of Jacksonville is one of the only people that is on a set price. And our price right now is zero. So they're not doing that anymore, and this is what we got. So weighted average price comes in with commingled products, broken down. Market price changes monthly, weight per ton. They come up with this hybrid, and that is the market value set by the southeast region. It's done regionally, northeast, northwest, southwest, central. These are all markets, commodity share, and they trade them. Now, again, we talked about fluctuated market price, it's a traded commodity. We're gonna have to stay on top of that. I mean, that's what I do now. Been watching this for a year and a half to try to forecast where we need to be to protect the city and make sure that our costs don't go to an exorbitant number. We find this on recyclingmarkets.net, we have an account, southeast region, we talked about that. Right now, the current weighted average price that has been around for about the last three months is $39.63 per ton. So if you were to fast forward to November, if that were the cost that would hold, we would pay 95 minus 39.63, and that would be our cost to dispose of recycled materials. Just to kind of look at where we're at right now with the cost and tonnage, you know, our estimated tonnage that's gonna come through is gonna be about 1,600 tons on the residential side and commingled with the small amount from commercial. So that's what we're gonna have to look to pay for come November 1, 2021, when this new contract comes in. So if you kind of look at the cost, that FY22 recycling cost is gonna be, depending on the weighted average price, somewhere between $92,000 and $158,000 for that year. And again, we're going from zero to this. And it's unfortunate, we knew it was coming, so we've done our best to negotiate the best contract that we can out of them. FY23, just to look at what that's gonna be, again, you know, we don't know if we're going off of what the weighted average price is now. It's been rising steadily, so we hope to see it keep rising, that's gonna cut our costs down. But this is what we're looking at, worst-case scenario to best-case scenario. All right, any questions on the recycling contract? I know it's a lot, and I know it's new, but please.
Mr. Thomas.
You know, we've been talking about it for a long time, and I understand the, I guess, the importance and the whatever desire that we have to recycle. And but I do see some conflicts over the years. I mean, it was, you know, 10 years ago, it was our obligation to recycle styrofoam.
Yes, sir.
And then one day, we wake up, and now it's not our obligation anymore. So things change, obviously.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I look at these numbers, and it's not terrible, it's not great. It's better, I mean, not as good as zero, but it's comparable to the landfill, it seems like. If you, when it comes down to the net-net.
Yes, sir.
That you're, you know, if you didn't recycle, you'd have to take it to the landfill, so you would pay approximately, because we're in that ballpark.
Pardon me? You want FY22?
The per ton, the 50. What is it we pay now at the landfill?
We're paying 57 per ton.
57 per ton, so you're talking about a wash, I guess, basically, if we could stop and just take it to the landfill. So that's, you know, if you could pay the same and you're still helping the environment and saving the thing, then that's great. But it just strikes me, I mean, I guess that struck me pretty significantly years ago, when you need to recycle your styrofoam, need to recycle styrofoam, that's your, that's your, you know, you're doing, and then all of a sudden, like a light switch, it just went off. Glancing at the chart, I mean, maybe we should think about, well, I mean, some of those lower yielding products. Shredded paper, I didn't know that was even allowed, but I mean, is that just newspapers, is that just newsprint?
Yes, sir, anything that they can make pulp out of, sir.
Anything that pulls out. I'd be interested to see what if we just went with what the law allowed, or permitted, or required, I guess, is what the, you know, the statute, what would that do to it? But then again, if you're sending it to a landfill or send it to the recycle for the same money, that doesn't make sense either.
Whatever doesn't go into the recycling stream, it's just gonna go into.
Go to the landfill anyway.
So we're paying for it one way or the other. The risk we run into is if we start putting prohibited materials, you know, right now, we have a.
Oh, right.
You understand?
Right, yeah, the statute, yeah, I saw that from, I mean, we can get Mike to fix that. No, I'm just kidding. But I guess that just is the thing, my initial impression is, is maybe we can get away from some of the things that are, well, lower yielding, and then make it. And I'm interested too, how it would affect your personnel needs. You know, it seems like we, I mean, obviously recycling is about, is it about half the personnel? We have two trucks every day, right?
Well, we have three trucks that run recycling routes with a crew of three. So there's nine bodies and three trucks dedicated to recycling.
And the regular is?
We have five other routes for that, sir.
Oh, okay, so it isn't, it's not 50/50 on that?
Actually, six, really, but, yeah. And then, of course, we have, you know, our bulk pickup trucks that are going and everything else. So recycling, I think the one thing to understand is that with recycling, if you have a trash route that picks up 650 houses a day on its route, that recycling truck's doing 1,200.
Oh, I see.
So those guys are really jamming. I would caution that, you know, there's a lot of education. You know, there's the human factor that goes into saying, okay, well, we're not gonna do this anymore. You know, we just spent 10 years telling you to do this, and now we're not gonna do this. I think that's gonna be a really hard transition to make, especially when we already have the infrastructure to support recycling.
Sure, I mean, I'm advocating that, I'm just noticing that at one point, it was, what was right then is not right now.
So there's changes that come through from Sunoco that are borderline ludicrous to me that I hear. And sometimes we just decide to, you know, we're just gonna kind of continue business as usual because we know it's gonna revert and change again. You know, the big pizza box controversy of 2018, I'm sure was one of them. And now they're taking pizza boxes again. I just said it, so. And it's just one of these things that we have to deal with, and it's not so much as it is Sunoco, but it's the market itself, what they have to deliver to. And understand that Sunoco is, I think, doing everything they can to rescue that MRF as far as trucking in material to be processed from other counties and other areas, as far as Wilmington, to support that MRF over there. They're putting in, they're kind of talking about with Mr. Carter and I, about bringing in this new heavy-duty sorts, 8 million things a second machine, so they can get away from having personnel there. So I think they're investing a lot in that, and I know that we were a target of that. You know, they wanted us, when they started this investment two years ago, I think they really wanted to target us to get us to start paying what they considered our fair share because we haven't been paying in the past. As I reiterated to them, not my problem, you signed the contract, we're in for two more years of free stuff, and we're gonna take every bit of it. And when we went to the table with this, you know, they wanted a much higher service cost to start with. And, you know, luckily, they were amenable to work with us, and we laid it out, what we're willing to do and what we're going to do. So we were one of the few people, as to your point, that actually, you know, we change with them. We do our best to support their needs and support their rules and what the market needs. So we set the standard for this county for them, and they need us. So that was a big, that was a big standing for us. I mean, even though we have GFL that bought up all the small guys, and now they're that big conglomerate that takes up a lot, and they can afford to truck things in from out of county into here, you know, they take up a big market share over there, but it's us that sets the standard. No one's paying attention to what everyone else is doing, they're paying attention to what the city of Jacksonville is doing. And if this is our standard, that's what everybody else falls to.
Questions? Who computes the weighted average?
So that would be the recyclingmarkets.net, sir. It's a, it's kind of, I wanna say, kind of like the Chicago Commodities Exchange, and they're the ones who compute that. It is not Sunoco that comes up with that price. That is a regional set price.
Is Sunoco the only game in town?
For us in this area, yes, sir. They are slowly taking over the entire southeast region.
Well, let's also mention, they're the ones that have the contract with the county to actually run the MRF, as we call it. And MRF stands for what?
Materials Recycling and Receiving Facility.
Okay, so unless we're going to ship materials somewhere else, you know, our contract has to be with Sunoco.
And we looked at that. We did. It's the cheapest cost for us to, you know, fall in line with this. As the, what we're gonna see in the forecast is, is that this weighted average price is gonna continue to rise. Why is that happening? America has started processing its own paper pulp again, they're firing up the paper mills again. They're coming up and looking again at regulation to lower the cost of recycled plastic bottles and materials. Right now, it costs more, it costs three times as much to use a recycled bottle than it costs to make virgin plastic in America. And that's just regulation, I mean, it's who we are, we want things done, we want them done cleanly, we want things following a certain standard. Prior to 2018, we could sell these things to other countries that didn't hold that standard. And we all saw what happened there, the reality of that. America doesn't put as much as we think we do, we don't pollute as much as you would think. So that standard, they have to look at that regulation and say to these companies that are processing the recycled plastics and try and find a way to meet in the middle where their costs could be lower to entice people to purchase the recycled materials. And that's been happening, and that's why our market share is coming back up, so.
If we could, let's go ahead and finish the presentation and then get back into further discussion, if you don't mind. So go ahead with your.
Appreciate it.
Good discussion.
All right, obviously, we talked about the other piece of this was the equipment costs. Like I said, we have 10 fleet vehicles that we talked about in detail. They're over seven years old, purchase costs have gone up since 2014, and I know you all have seen that in the other divisions as well. Container replacement, this is one of my biggest heartburns. In FY20, we spent $61,000 in new containers for the city. So there's, and that is residential containers for recycling and garbage. And we're gonna spend another $60,000 again this year, and we'll probably do it again next year. And the cost of that is going up. The cost of transportation is going up, the cost of producing those containers is going up. Luckily, we enjoy the Sourcewell contract with those, so we don't have to go out for bid every time, and there's a set price annually that they hold to. Obviously, lead times have been problematic, getting those in just because of COVID. We went from a four-week lead time to a 22-week lead time to get new containers in. But again, that's an eye-opening cost when you think about 12,000 residents, even if they all had three, there's still only 36,000 containers. And we're, you know, we're doing 61,000 in that was a year, so something to think about. FY20 maintenance costs, last year, we budgeted for $391,000 to repair the fleet and keep it running. Ended up spending over that, $420,000. And that's, you know, and I think that low rise is, you know, a testament to our fleet mechanics who go above and beyond to find the best way to do it and do a lot of, as much as the work as they can in the house. You know, Ed and his crew, you know, they have their limitations, but they work through them. And that kept, but still, we're well over what we budgeted. And what does that do to? It's the aging fleet, you know, we're going into higher levels of maintenance, higher echelons of maintenance. You know, things that are at their service limit that cost more. Arms on an automated truck are $7,000, just to buy one ready to go. And it's a real cost comparison there, you know, kind of a troop-to-task analysis that you have to make when you look at rebuilding an older one or buying a new one. And still, that truck's down for three, four days to hang that new arm, but it's a cost. And of course, the price of fuel is gonna increase. We, I mean, we know where we're headed, and that's what we're gonna see. New developments, over 300 new single-family homes are planned for construction in the next, you know, 18 to 24 months. Those homes are gonna build up, they're gonna be near Carolina Forest and areas like that, and we're gonna end up having to come up with additional routes. Again, I would like those new residents, because they have the space and they have the proper parking, that we could go to an automated truck in that area. So we're gonna need a new automated truck to support that, and we're gonna need another driver. Those are all costs, you know, like we said earlier, it's almost $300,000 for an automated one-armed banded truck. And, you know, after we get done with benefits and everything else for a full-time driver, we're looking at almost $60,000 a year for that driver. And it's needed. Again, we only, like I said, we only have 33 personnel that service 1.8 million calls a year. So they do their, they do a great job. And this is where I leave you. Thank you for your time.
I think you can tell how fortunate we are that Michael is with us. He has really taken on this task, and he and Carrie and Wally are doing a great job with their personnel. I want to spend a few minutes talking to you about the, how we're gonna potentially fund this. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but obviously, by the time we get ready to adopt a budget several months from now, this is one of those hard decisions that you're gonna have to look at. Strictly talking about the recycling and the maintenance, not talking about the additional crews you're gonna need with growth. Because fortunately, with growth does come additional residences who will pay an additional monthly fee. But really, when I look at this, you have three options. Increase the general fund subsidy. Second, increase the monthly fees. Third, increase the tax rate. Let's look at each of these. Currently, your subsidy is 1.8 million. What you could do for the first year, which is not a full year, but for the portion of the year in FY22, what you could do is increase the subsidy by 150,000 and not pass on charges to anyone else. For the second year, which is FY23, you would need to go up $250,000. Under this option, there'd be no additional fee to the customers, it would cover recycling costs only, and the general fund balance would be reduced with the subsidy increase. Now, Michael showed you a while ago that the weighted average price is gonna reduce the tonnage price. What I have factored in here is assuming that the weighted average price is zero. Why? If you remember, probably eight years ago, you agreed with the budget philosophy that we were gonna budget fuel at the highest price we ever saw. The reason why is because no one can predict what the price of fuel is gonna be. I have to admit, when I filled up my F-150 the other day at $2.39, I kind of swallowed it hard because I got used to that $2 gas that we've had for quite a while. But from a budgeting standpoint, Gail, as you know, she is a very conservative person, and y'all are very conservative in what you do. So in our budget, if we're going to increase the subsidy or if we're going to increase any of the fees, we're assuming the worst. Now, you may decide that's not a good budgeting philosophy. But these numbers up there assume that we will get nothing from the weighted average price. Why is that a good idea? Well, if you're increasing the subsidy from the general fund, any money that you don't spend goes back where? To the general fund. On the other hand, if we said, okay, we're only gonna increase the subsidy $90,000 because the weighted average price looks good. It turns out the weighted average price is bad. We have to come back to y'all in the middle of the budget year and say, oops, we need more money. It's better to overestimate your expenses and return to your savings account money than the other way around. It's just a good business practice. But this first option then assumes that you're going to increase the subsidy. The second option would be to keep the subsidy exactly where it is, at 1.8 million, but to increase the fee by $4 a month. What that would do is the residential fee would go from $10 to $14 plus six. So it would go from $16, what's the six? Remember, that's the county. It would go to $20 a month. Small business would go up $4 to $21.25. It would cover the projected cost of recycling as well as some of the maintenance cost. It would maintain the general fund transfer at the current balance, and of course, it recognizes the county fee at $6. If you look at this, that subsidy would be, we feel comfortable for at least a four-year period, where you would not be looking at a sanitation fee increase unless the county does something with the tonnage at the landfill. But we feel comfortable that if you raised it $4 a month, you would keep the subsidy at 1.8, customer would go up four, it would cover the challenges, and it would be good for four years. The commercial fee increase impact. Once again, as Michael showed you, a lot of the recycling comes from residential, some of it comes from commercial. For the commercial to pay their portion, the enterprise account with no city subsidy, the tipping fee would go up a dollar. It would go from $7.70 to $8.70. It accounts for service cost increase, accounts for recycling disposal, and promotes recycling. The third option, which I know all of y'all are excited about, would be to raise your property tax. Well, if one cent of property tax generates 350,000, and technically, it's 364,000 and change right now, but for simple math, you would have to go up to generate the $150,000 next year, you'd have to increase it by four tenths of a cent. And the year later, or if you want. And the year later, or if you wanted to do it all now, to generate 250, 250,000, you'd have to go up seven tenths of a cent. Here's what I recommend to you, and we're not asking you to vote tonight, we're asking you to think. Option two, raise the residential rate, but do it in stages. For FY 22, raise it $2, and for FY 23, raise it $2. You would raise that effective July the 1st of 2021. In other words, the start of the fiscal year. By doing that, remember, your recycling cost is only eight months. So you would not have to increase your fund balance subsidy. It will give you a little bit of a cushion. On the second portion there, increase it on small business. But because businesses, and I know people are struggling too, I'm not setting that aside. But because the small businesses have really been hit, I would not recommend any increase in FY 22. But have the $2 increase in FY 23 and another $2 increase in FY 24. So you'd get your $4 increase two years in a row with the city. But years one would have no increase, years two and three would have an increase for the small business. Now, for commercial collection. Commercial collection. I, I know that, that many businesses, big businesses or little businesses are struggling. So instead of going from 770 to 870, a full dollar a tip, consider just a 30-cent increase for FY 22. And let's see where business is in FY 23. Don't make any determination. Budget at the full, the fourth recommendation is budget at the full charge per ton with no assumption that you're going to have a weighted average price return. And then, of course, the fifth one is the general sum, the general fund subsidy will be whatever it is that's needed. So very quickly, I'm just going to back up. Recommendations for funding the challenge on recycling and so forth with sanitation. Starting in FY 22, $2 increase, and FY 23, $2 increase. Small business, no increase in 22, $2 increase in 23, $2 increase in 24. Commercial, 30 cent per tip, not a dollar. And decide till next year what you're going to do on commercial. Again, budget at the full price per ton. So what would that be? For FY 22, you're going to budget at $95 a ton. For FY 23, you're going to budget at $100 a ton, and the next year, an additional five, and so forth. Those are the recommendations. We're not asking you tonight to make any decision, but we would certainly welcome over the rest of this evening, tonight or in subsequent meetings, any guidance that you'd like for us to consider so that at a point in time, we can figure out how do we address the new recycling, uh, cost. Thoughts and questions, please?
Well, I think you can take the whole thing of a property tax off the table. I don't think anybody's going to agree with that.
Well, John told me that, and I told him, I said, well, we ought to at least give them the option. So.
One last question. Mike, have you ever seen a viable, uh, robust, uh, successful effort made by, in municipality or community to reduce?
To what?
Reduce waste in general?
Well, I, I think we're, you're talking about recycling pure?
Well, not any, any reduce, I mean, what do you call it?
So, uh, we can, I mean, there's grants that are out there for, uh, waste reduction programs. Uh, again, it follows that three R principle that we talked about, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle. And obviously, you can't completely, um,
Right.
get rid of your sanitation. Uh, but yes, I mean, there, there's been some, uh, there's, there's programs out there that we can go to. But what it really comes to is the education on the resident. And we need the effort from them. There's nothing that any of us in this room can do besides our own homes, uh, to reduce that, that waste cost. Um, we, we have had a lot of success, obviously, by, uh, having people, not so much tonnage, but, um, volume, uh, being cut down, uh, through, uh, you know, we've bought a, a lot of, uh, containers and, and to have people break down cardboard, crush bottles, uh, you know, crushing cans, uh, things of that nature. We have, we still enjoy a lot of private recyclers in, in the area that'll take the, um, that'll take the aluminum and they'll, they'll take the metals, uh, and, and pay out. So that reduces. I think all those things are your second and third order reduction efforts. As far as the city goes, I mean, we can definitely try and do more. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what that program would be, but there's, there's resources out there through the state to, to guide us on that. But I can tell you that they are 100% at the, uh, generator, the, the first generator in the cycle, which is the resident.
Let me address that also. We, we live in a throwaway society. It's just the way it is. Uh, I will tell you, as most of you know, it's not this piece of equipment, but it's just about this same size. A lot of the work I do is with the dictation machine. Well, guess what? It went on the fritz this week. So what am I going to do with it? Well, I looked in the phone book to find out, are there any small electronic places that repaired this? And guess what I found? None. So you know what's going to happen tomorrow morning to that piece of equipment? Going to get recycled or thrown away. But that's the society we live in. I can tell you from the planning magazines that I, that I subscribe to, many communities have tried to address the issue of the throwaway society. And they simply are not successful. We are taught every day, oh, well, if it doesn't work, just go buy another one. Look at all the stores that are open 24 hours a day. Need one at 3 o'clock in the morning? Go buy another one. Communities have tried to address the issue of garbage, whether it's recycling or just garbage, by campaigns, and they found them to be temporarily okay, and then they fall right back. The other thing they have found is put a price tag on it. Make it so expensive that people will say, uh, no, I don't need that third pair of shoes. The problem with that is people still throw it away. Where do they now throw it away? They throw it away in the backyard. They throw it away out in the woods. They throw it away in somebody else's dumpster. Then we get calls from the commercial garbage saying, hey, there's citizens who are bringing their garbage and throwing it in our camp. It's a noble thought. It's not a realistic thought.
If I could just add one thing to that, uh, Mr. Thomas, in the state, uh, when this, when this kind of crisis happened in the recycling world and everybody's recycling fees went through the roof, um, Craven County, we know, almost went to $60 just to do once a month recycling, uh, just to try and cut the cost down. Uh, there were three municipalities that actually chose to abandon recycling. Uh, and, and they have all reverted back within 18 months, uh, just to cut this cost down. And to go to kind of what you're saying is, hey, look, you know, there's private, uh, ways to recycle. You can sort and recycle and go to these private facilities. Um, and again, you know, that's just work on the citizen. Uh, so all that ended up back in the revenue stream, as I told you, which kind of gave way to the governor saying, hey, look, now the landfill can ban a generator. Uh, so we don't want to fall into that area. And historically, the chance to abandon recycling, it, it has not worked. You just can't do it. I hope that answers your question on that.
Well, with, uh, the tax increase off the table, we will continue to provide you any information that you want. Uh, and at a point in time, y'all will be the ones to make the decision, but it really comes down to this. Increase subsidy, fees. If y'all are comfortable, how about if we take a, uh, 10-minute break and we'll come back and talk about paving?
One quick question, can we get a copy of the information here on this presentation?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, listen, you recess for 10 minutes.
Okay, we're ready when y'all are. Okay. One of the challenges that we're also going to be facing for the coming year will be, uh, the constant challenge of how are we going to pay for, uh, street paving? I've asked Wally to do the first part, and then I'll do the second part regarding funding, so please.
Mayor Council, thank you. Um, eh, these are going to be some slides that you've seen before. Uh, we'll, we'll go through kind of a refresher. I'll tell you where we are on a couple of projects. And talk about some of the things, some of the decisions that have been made. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Woodruff to finish. The city owns and maintains 165 miles of streets. Now, that's not all of the streets in the city, but those are the streets that the city owns and maintains. There's also 47 miles of NC DOT streets. Um, and those are typically your major roadways. Your Gum Branch Road, Bell Fork Road, Harget Street, Country Club Road, you know, portions of Piney Green that are in city limits, um, Western Boulevard, 17, 24. Uh, and one that I forget about a lot is the access roads associated with those. So like the, the Frontage Road to 24 that Sanders Ford is on. Those are all NC DOT streets. And then we have 19 and a half miles of, of privately maintained streets. Uh, and one of the most notable, uh, neighborhoods with private streets is actually Williams Farm because it's a gated community. So while that looks like a city main, maintained street, it was built to our standards. It's curb and gutter, sidewalks, uh, just like most of the other streets, uh, that the city maintains. Those are actually private streets because it's a gated community. We have three, uh, paving contracts that are, uh, getting ready to kick off. Um, all three of these projects have been bid and awarded to contractors. Uh, we have the FY 19 Street Rehab, uh, the rest of Carolina Forest. If you recall, we paved from Ramsey Road down to Terry Lee Linear Drive. And then this would be the remainder from Terry Lee Linear back to Western Boulevard. And then we have, um, we worked with, uh, Community Development to, sorry, Neighborhood Officer, what, Neighborhood Services?
Community Development.
We worked with Community Development for a grant, uh, because a low-income, uh, apartment complex was built in the, uh, Foxhorn Village area. And we were able to secure a grant to resurface some of the streets in that area. So we have three streets, um, as part of Wing Gate Park that will be resurfaced. And that totals about 1.1 million dollars. Uh, the first two are actually Pell Bill funded, and then that third one, I'm, as I mentioned, was a grant funded. The Pell Bill allocation that the city receives is a portion of what is given to the entire state. Legislatively, there is, um, a set number. It did not used to be a set number. It, it kind of changed from year to year, uh, and it increased, uh, with the, uh, as part of the gas tax. But it is currently a set number. It's 147 and a half million dollars. And then that's distributed to, uh, municipalities, 75% based on population and then 25% based on road mileage. So if a community is adding road miles or their population grows, then other, their Pell Bill funding can go up, but because it's a set number, other communities can actually drop. So the number can be decreasing. And our number has actually been slightly diminishing over the last five years. Um, and you can see that in FY 21, we received 1.7 million. Um, I, I want to say two or three years ago, we were up around 1.8 million. The, that 1.7 million is then budgeted annually. Uh, about 890 thou, or 880,000 goes into the Streets Division Maintenance for Maintenance. Uh, it covers personnel cost, it covers equipment cost, and it covers all of the roadway maintenance that we do, whether that be with, you know, crack sealing or patching potholes or where we go in and have to patch small areas, uh, in if, eh, any type of right-of-way maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, uh, handicap ramp maintenance, anything associated with maintenance of the street, the sidewalk, or the curb and gutter for all of the city streets. Um, and then the remainder is put in a project for our street repaving, which is our capital projects. And one thing to note is if, uh, Kelly and the Pell Bill section do not spend all of their maintenance funds, that also rolls into the project. So hypothetically, if in FY 21, they spent $800,000 even, then that 78,000 would then become available for paving streets because we do want to maximize, uh, the amount of streets that we are able to pave. And then the capital projects portion, or the remaining portion that goes to capital projects, is split between street paving, which is the bulk of that money, and then sidewalks, anytime we install new sidewalks in areas, or anytime that we are required to make, um, ADA accommodations. And there is, uh, relatively new federal legislation that says, if you repave a roadway, then at minimum, at the intersections, you have to come back through and upgrade the handicap crossings, um, so that they meet current ADA requirements. So that is, um, a slight increase from what we've seen in the past. Now, with that legislation, it does not require if sidewalks don't exist for you to put sidewalks in. But if they are there, you have to bring them into current compliance. In FY 21, um, the council recognized some of the challenges that we had with funding street paving and actually added $1 million as a one-time transfer from the general fund. So for FY 21, we have roughly, it's, it's slightly above $857,000 in Pell Bill available for paving. And then we have the additional $1 million general fund transfer available. And we are thinking that that will give us somewhere between four to six miles. What I will say is that, um, in the last three projects that we just bid, um, bids were very competitive. They were actually very good. And I don't remember the exact number, but I want to say that between bidders, um, the, the total bid was roughly $690,000. And I want to say it was less than a, a five or 10,000 difference between the highest and the lowest bidder. And I think we had five bidders or something. So bids were very competitive, um, and they were, um, actually, it was a, a, a great time to receive bids for paving. Um, we hope that continues. We are actually currently, we have 31 street segments identified that we're currently evaluating for the next round to go out. We plan to take, um, this 1.8 million dollars that's available for funding and actually try to package it into two packages, you know, targeting around $800,000 to $900,000, um, or so. And what that does is it, it does keep it a little more competitive for, you know, somebody that's not a large paving contractor. So, um, it, it does create other bidding op, or bidding opportunities for some of the smaller paving companies. The city, this is just a pie chart showing city streets. Um, you know, we've talked before, we grade city streets just like a school grade. A and B is, A is excellent, B is good. And then we have C, which is kind of your, your average, your, your middle of their life. And then, you know, D and E is where we're starting to get into problems and failures. Uh, this is a, an example of an A-rated street. Um, we have 22 miles of A-rated streets. You can see there that the street's in great shapes. There's really no evidence of any problems. Um, a B street, uh, very similar, great-looking street. You can kind of see the, um, You can kind of see the joints and maybe some wear in the travel lane, but still, you know, no cracks, no potholes or anything like that. And then when you get to your C-rated street, that's where you start to begin to see cracking and other challenges. And I picked this one on purpose. This is one you've seen before. But the purpose here is to show where we've gone out and done maintenance. Those black marks are cracks, but the crack's not that wide. The crack's actually much smaller, and what we've done is gone through and sealed that crack up with crack seal material so that water doesn't penetrate the asphalt and start to cause separation and, you know, potholes and those kind of things. And then this is a D level or a D-rated street, and we have a total of roughly 18 miles of D-rated streets. This is actually a section of Coal Drive, and you can start to see there's, you know, more than just longitudinal or horizontal cracking. You've actually got some alligator cracking, some asphalt starting to peel up. So this would begin to be on the lower end of a D-rated street. And then here's an example of an E-rated street. You can see that the, you know, the asphalt's brittle. You can, it's hard to see there, but, you know, the travel lane on the left-hand side of the picture is starting to be depressed, asphalt's peeling out or ravelling, and it's alligator cracked almost the entire length. Many times on an E-rated street, when you start seeing ruts or depressions in that street, it's much more expensive to come in. It's not just, you know, mill off the asphalt and repave it. Now, we're talking about, we have to do base repair and bring that street back up. And the worse the area, the more expensive it is. So in total, we have, you know, A and B are really good. So, you know, C and below is where we start doing a lot of our maintenance activities and start looking at repaving. We have almost 50% of our streets fall in that C, D, and E. It's just below 50%. So we're really looking at some challenging, challenges moving forward with repaving streets. And if you look at the ones that really are costly to repave, that fall in that D and that E category where you're starting to see, you know, base failures or infrastructure challenges underneath, then we've got 23 miles. So here's the maintenance activities we do based on rating. A and B streets, it's not that we don't do anything because we do. We go out, we try to frequently sweep those streets. We try to go in and make sure that catch basins are clear or, you know, if it's, if it comes to a catch basin and then runs out to a ditch, we try to do ditch maintenance. We try to get that water off the roadway as quickly as possible. And then, you know, one of the worst things for a street is water. For C streets, we're starting to see more of those physical maintenance activities like the crack sealing that I showed you, pothole repair. In some areas, we've actually gone in and were in areas really starting to pothole bad, but it's just a small area and an overall relatively good street, we'll go in, mill that small area out, and then re-asphalt that small area. So we'll resurface that small area. So we call that our mill and fill program. And we do the milling in-house with some equipment that we have, and then we hire a contractor to come in and put the asphalt down. And then on our D-level streets, that's where we put a lot of our attention for our capital improvement program because that's where we can stretch our dollars the furthest. That the idea there is we go in and we mill all of the asphalt off and then overlay it. Or we'll mill an inch and overlay with two inches. So the idea is to catch that street before it gets to the point where we have to do base failure, base repair because of failure. And that's really where we run into the problem with E-rated streets, is getting into base failure. In some cases, that might be just one small area, and overall, the, you know, the asphalt's in really rough shape, but it's just one small area. So we may try to pick up and intertwine some of those E-rated streets when we do the capital improvement program. In the case of King Street, it is an E-rated street, but it has no base failures on it at all. So that's a case of where we will be able to go in and just mill off the asphalt that's there, and it really won't take much milling because it's, it almost looks like gravel as it is. So we'll go in and mill that off and then repave that. That's one that we can get to quickly. Excuse me. And then the cost when we have to rebuild is roughly $800,000 to $1 million per year. So some of our challenges, thank you, sir, appreciate that, is that we have 165 miles of roadways. And as I mentioned, almost half of that is in that C, D, and E-rated category. So if we're only doing somewhere around three miles of streets per year, then it's going to take us 25 years to get through all of those streets. So the design life of a street is roughly 20 years. Now, streets, if you take care of them, will last longer than 20 years. But that's what, you know, industry will tell you the design life of a street is. But a street that's already at a C or below is not going to last another 25 years. And then if you look at just the D and E rated streets at 23 miles, and if we're figuring the same three miles, which I think that's very generous because, as I've mentioned, it's a whole lot more costly to be, to rebuild an E street, you're really talking more than eight years of funding at the current level. So if you look at the overall design life of 20 years and know that, you know, good maintenance, we can stretch that, and that's really the idea. You start touching that street when it gets to a C level and you continue to maintain that street and try to prevent it from becoming a D or an E-rated street. And you use your capital improvement program to pick up those D-rated streets and bring those back up to an A, then we're looking at the full cycle. The challenge is, you know, just simply if you do 160 miles, 65 miles of street and you say we can do roughly three to four miles of street a year, your streets have to last you 50 years. And that's really one of the largest challenges that we have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Woodruff.
Thank you. As Wally said, we try to focus, and it's been the council's policy, we focus on the C roads. If you can catch them before they get to be Ds and Es, you get a whole lot more mileage for the dollars. The realities, though, are what Wally has shown you. Option one is to continue the current Powell Bill utilization. That's basically half the Powell Bill going to paving, half the Powell Bill going to maintenance, no additional money. And with that, not much paving gets accomplished. A second option is Powell Bill funding put the total thing to paving. We're going to come back and discuss each of these in a minute. Option three is what we've been trying to do. You, as a council, voted, I believe, three years ago. We've asked the state legislature for this. We've not gotten it approved. We know that the North Carolina League of Municipalities is now behind this. But to have a local referendum for a five-year period where one quarter cent would go to the sales tax with all of it going to paving. A fourth option is to use a portion of your four-cent capital reserve for paving. A fifth is to adopt the license tag fee. The sixth is annually consider fund balance. And the seventh is one I know, again, you're going to totally support, and that's to raise property tax. Let's go back and look at each of them. Again, Powell Bill funding. I apologize, that number should be 850. But Powell Bill funding current, you keep it just like it is. Half of it goes to maintenance, half of it goes to paving. You accomplish three miles per year. If you were to address all or direct all of the Powell Bill funding to paving, 1.7, 1.8 million, you could double the amount of paving you do. It's only one problem. Where are you going to get the $850,000 to do all the maintenance work that Powell Bill's currently funding? So this is not realistic. You'd have to get that money from some other source. A third, of course, is the Powell Bill plus the quarter cent. And it is, in fact, the best option. The only problem is you don't have the authority to do that. The fourth is to utilize one cent of the capital project money. One cent, 368,000. That would impact be an increase of roughly 50% of the paving to 4.5 miles, but it reduces funds for capital projects. And the other reality is, most of that money is already committed. And if you are, in fact, going to build Jackham yet and pay for it back the way we've talked, then there isn't any of the four-cent money that can be directed that way. The fifth option, we've talked about several times, and that is to establish a license tag fee. Not a popular option, but let's look at the money. By state law, you could go up to $25. $5 of that has to go to transit. Is it five or 10 run?
Five.
Five would have to go to transit. That would generate significant money. And you can see how it would increase the amount you could pave. Option six is the Powell Bill plus the general fund supplement. When the audit came in, in October, November of '20, this council decided they would take $1 million out of the fund balance and put it towards paving. That was a one-time decision. And under this option, for every $500,000 that you took from the general fund, you could add roughly 1.5 miles. So it'd be a 50% increase in what you're paving. The sixth option is a property tax increase. For every cent, you get $368,000, but it doesn't pave a lot of streets. Here's what I recommend to you. Adopt option six, Powell Bill plus general fund transfer for FY22 only. But you wait until the audit comes in, in October, November, to see how much money, if any, you're transferring to your savings account. If you're fortunate, like we were this past year, and you're transferring roughly $3 million to your savings account, then consider taking some of that. Again, though, I would not recommend that you adopt this as a policy, but rather as a year-to-year decision. At the end of the day, we all know that the citizens of Jacksonville get phenomenal services. You look at what was just reported to you by Michael relative to sanitation. You look at your police, you look at your fire. Two areas that I think we are going to try to continue to focus on are going to be recreation improvements, and the other is going to be street paving. I don't know about you, but I think all 80,000 citizens of Jacksonville, however many of us there are, we're impacted by those streets every day. So here are your options. Again, we're opening this for discussion, but you can make a decision tonight or you can wait till a future date. We're certainly not pressing you for a decision. But this is a tawning challenge. I will say to you, the mayor and I have already talked to Senator Lozaro. Mayor, it's kind of unusual to call him Senator Lozaro. Mayor pro temp, Senator Lozaro. But we've already talked to him again about trying to get the referendum. If we are really going to get on top of our paving issues, we have to have a source that actually provides real money. All of the other options that are up there, they provide a little bit of money, but they're not ever going to get you out of the quagmire that we're in. So short-term, I recommend number six. When you see the general fund or the audit next year, hopefully, we can get the state legislature to agree to let us at least ask the citizens for a referendum.
I think that's a good path to go down. It's worked very good this year so far. Who knows? I mean, it may be that we don't have that kind of report in our audit, but, you know, from there, we can pick it up and run with it from there. I still think that the quarter cent sales tax is the best method to get as much paving as we can possibly. In that way, everybody gets a share of the burden financially. As far as putting it back on property tax, I totally disagree with that concept. You're only having certain people pay the bill, and, you know, that's not fair. But I think we need to, we need to get, stay in contact with Senator Lozaro and our other legislative delegation and try to, try to get some response at the state level to give us the authority and let the people make the decision. I think, I think what we would find out is people want their roads to be better than what they are. And I think, I don't think there'd be a whole lot of problem getting this passed in a referendum once we had the authority to do so.
Is the league pushing that proposal?
That is one of the, Mayor, when you and I met in the goal setting, I believe there were, were there 10 or 15 goals?
10, 10 goals.
Okay, that was one of the 10 goals that the league adopted for this year.
Good.
And by the way, Mayor, I think I said this a few minutes ago. John told me y'all wouldn't support a tax increase, but I told you we ought to give it anyway.
You should listen to your legal counsel.
Appreciate all of the guidance. We have a lot of decisions to be made over the next several months, but we will find a way to get there. Wally, well done.
Good job, Wally. Next item on the agenda, under non-consent, is the direction on Ward 3 vacancy. And I asked to have this put on the agenda for tonight's meeting for discussion. And the reason being is that, you know, back in, I can't remember what the date was, the previous meeting that we, when we made a decision on this, the circumstances have changed quite dramatically, you know, because of the census figures coming in late and pushing things off even further. So I felt that this may be some, this may be something we really need to revisit again here and make a determination, do we go forward or do we continue on with, you know, what we passed off at the February, I'm sorry, yeah, February 2nd meeting. In my opinion, I think it's, it might be the right time to fill that seat when we're talking about maybe 12, 18 months now before, you know, something to be done. I mean, before that position's filled, before that seat, let me put it this way, before we're allowed to have an election. Because the last thing I heard was the census figures probably would not be ready until late September now is what's going on with that. With filing, the filing would have been in the first two weeks of July. And again, like you say, that's just the raw numbers we're getting. The numbers have to be analyzed, and then hopefully, in a timely manner, we could get it on for the primary. I think it's the primary that the county has, county commissioners have in the...
Yes, sir, that's correct. It would be the filing, under normal years...
If.
The filing is in January, which would be, we're talking now 2022, and the primary is normally in May. So you'd file in January, and you would have your city election along with the primary for the county commissioners in May if the dates do not change. That's just historically been kind of the...
Just out of curiosity, what happens if we don't have it done by then?
Well, I, the plan is now, again, and the information that we've got from the census is that we should be getting some block data information sometime in September of 2021. As soon as we get that, then we'll be able to begin the analysis. But that, again, as you were pointing out, three months can be a short period of time. Not just to do the analysis, but to do the public awareness for the communities and so forth. But, but again, right now, under the statute, unless something changes through the legislature, like I said before, in 2001, they actually extended the date from, let's say, the 1st of July to the 23rd of July, is my recollection. But, and that didn't help us then. We still had to use that statute and get the council to delay the election... to delay the election until the following year, 2002. But absent something there, we just could have to play it by ear. But right now, it's looking 99.9%. Like this election for this year, the municipal election, will have to be put off by a resolution from council as we get closer and have more definitive information. But it's pretty definitive so far from the Census Bureau. They've already pretty much said, and I think we shipped out to the council some of those information from the census that it is going to be in the September timeframe before you're going to be getting the information necessary to do the analysis on a block-by-block basis to do the redistricting.
So definitely, it's not going to be an election in the city in November.
If I were in Las Vegas, I would certainly put my money on there not being an election this year.
I have some thoughts on this. We have one person send in a letter.
Yes.
Already. What I was thinking, and I hope the council concur with me on this. I think a good idea here would be to put, put a notice out, you know, that on G10 or some other forum, and invite interested parties to submit a letter of intent for this position, outlining, you know, their qualifications and their desire to fill this position. Now, we know there's a caveat to that. They have to be at least 18 years of age. They have to be eligible to vote, okay? They have to live in Ward Three. Ward Three seat is the one that's being replaced, okay? So with that in mind, and I would leave this a very short window. I was, personally was thinking about two weeks. Have, have our letters of intent in by 5 o'clock on Tuesday, March 2nd. And then we'll have that information available to us on the March 16th meeting for discussion. No? I hear from y'all? Plan or no plan?
Mayor, the, the two weeks seems a little short to me. Three weeks is a little better. That would still allow us to consider it the March 16th meeting. I would, my suggestion would be at least three weeks.
The only reason I picked the second meeting was because we could cover it within that period of time before the March 16th meeting. But, yeah, I mean, that's, we can be flexible on that.
We, Mr. Mayor, we could certainly, if they were in, any interest of, any letters of interest were in the clerk's hand by 5 o'clock on March the 9th, then we could put all of that as part of your agenda package, which would go out on March the 11th. We'd have time to process that. And then you would have it, all the different letters and an agenda item for y'all, the council, to deal with it on March the 16th.
Acceptable?
I had a question, Mr. Mayor and council. How do you gentlemen feel about, say, for example, if you had someone that was interested in running, who have lived in the community, let's just say, for five years, versus a new resident coming into the city of Jacksonville that may have lived in another ward, but they have now moved into this ward? Do you, do you feel that there should be a limitation for that particular individual? They've had to live in Ward Three for a certain amount of time? Or, okay, as long as the person was 18, a voter? What about criminal records? What about someone that convicted felon, has a criminal past? Is that a disclaimer? I'm just asking questions.
Mr. Carter, you want to?
Well, I think, number one, you need to let anyone who meets three criteria. That is, number one, they're 18 years of age. They are registered to vote, and they live in Ward Three.
Okay.
Once you have that, where there's one person, six people, I think back one year, we had 12 people, 12 individuals one year that I put in the agenda item, my carman helped me, and we did. Once you have that, then you can judge those persons against each other. And the council then can decide how you want to, to do that and to, to elect one of those X number of people from that group. And anyone from the council could advocate on behalf of one person. And, and just going back to this group of 12, and Mr. Vittner was here at the time, he nominated all 12. And so they all got in front of council, and then it was by written ballot, all 12 were on the ballot, and one person got four votes on the first vote. And so that person was seated for that particular position. But there's several ways. But again, I, I think that'll be council's decision to look at all the candidates and judge them based upon their criteria and their, whether, as you said, whether they've served on council before, whether they've been on a commission, whether they have lived in that ward for all their life or just moved in there just to run for this particular seat. I mean, there's all kinds of things the council will have to weigh in your independent decision as to who you want to seat in that until the next election.
The reason that I ask the question is because I think Mr. Carter said that with our charter that we currently have, there is not definitive guidelines. So I think that at a future time, after, of course, this selection is made, I think it will be, you know, it's imperative that the council have more definitive guidelines because things will happen, whether it's somebody wanting to resign effective immediately, whether someone moves, or worst-case scenarios, someone dies whilst in office. I think we need to have a more definitive guidelines to guide our decisions so we're not making things up as we go, and it's one way today, and it's something tomorrow. But I, but I agree that those three guidelines are perfectly fine with me.
Well, th- those three are mandated by law. But I think also, Dr. Washington, after this particular, we can check and see how other cities do it, and if they have any additional guidelines. The state statute gives no guidelines. It said, a vacancy that occurs shall be filled by appointment of the city council, period. So again, it's how restrictive you want to be on yourselves or your predecessors in the future.
I think that's the key there, though.
Guidelines would be guidelines subject to change by that concept at that particular time.
So really, there's not this all fluid. I mean, it's all dynamic because another council comes in and has the same situation occur, and they could change the rules just like that.
John, I had a question. Since this is a personnel-type decision, no?
No, sir.
It's not personnel? Okay.
Well, it's a personnel, but it's not something that's, that's allowed to be discussed in a closed session as far as the appointment. This has to be done in open session. This person is not an employee of the city, which y'all normally do talk about. Dr. Woodruff or myself in, in closed session, but this is not falling into that definition, no, sir.
And if you had an interested individual who is currently a city employee, what would be the guidelines for that individual?
My recollection, that employee would have to resign to take the seat.
Effective immediately from the city or upon the nomination of receiving the awarded seat?
Upon the, upon receiving, he'd have to agree, or she would have to agree to resign in order to take the seat as a council person. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so what have we got so far?
We have, Mr. Mayor, that the clerk and I and media will work, and we'll get out all kind of through Facebook, G10, an ad in the paper, a press release, et cetera, that anyone interested should, and meets those three criteria, without me going over them again, would submit their letter of interest by March 9th at 5:00 p.m. We will also check with Mr. Sandy, who's already submitted his, to see if he wants to update it, and if he wants to still be considered, and we'll move forward from there.
Also, one other caveat, I don't know if this needs to be added or not, that all current sitting council members be involved in the process?
You will be.
Okay, so, I mean, everybody has to be here.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Let's clarify that. What you're saying is that if on March the 16th, for whatever reason, there are only five of you present, it will be postponed to a different date?
Unless we could do, yeah. Unless you could do it through Zoom or something. Say somebody's in the hospital or something like that. You know, it's going to have to be put off. I mean, it's got to be.
When you want to consider this, your decision and your agenda item, it can be deferred, no questions.
Good job. So did, so we're clear on that? We don't need to take any formal action at this point?
There was a consensus of the time and the date from the council, and we'll move forward.
Did you want to do anything tonight?
I think the reports, I think we're going to do them.
I'd like to suggest amend the agenda to go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Second.
Motion, second? All in favor of seeing the 5, I say, huh? And that's not going into closed, that's just to amend the agenda. Okay.
Why don't we just stay right here and let's excuse the staff?
Yes, we, we can do that. I would go out and tell media, do you want to go through the reports first, Mayor?
Let's do the, let's do the reports first, and then we'll flow into it. That was just, that was just to go and put it on the agenda. All right. So our reports will start with Dr. Washington. Glad to have you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, no report.
Mayor Protim?
No report.
Mr. Jackson?
Glad to be back.
Glad to have you. Mr. Warden?
No report, proud to be here.
Okay, so we have some, Dr. Woodruff.
First of all, the Winter Fest, which was scheduled for December, is actually going to be this coming Saturday. It's scheduled for very cold weather, which is a good thing. Unfortunately, this will not be one where the public can simply drop in. Because of the governor's guidelines, we have advertised, and we have one-hour slots starting at 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock. Unfortunately, we have 100% filled all the slots. So the reason why I'm bringing this up is that if you're in the area of the Commons on Saturday and you see this wonderful festival going on, unless you're pre-registered, please don't drop by. Just ride by and wave and pray that next year in December or whenever, that the Winter Fest will be fully operational.
With Santa Claus also, with Santa Claus being there too.
Absolutely. But again, we want to remind the public that if you have registered, make sure that you stay at your time. Because if you're in the 1 o'clock slot and show up at 2 o'clock, you're going to be told, sorry. If you haven't registered, then please accept our apology tonight. But we are full. It will be a very limited set of activity, but it will have the main functions of snow, sledding, and ice skating, and a lot of other good things. The other thing we would like to mention to, to the public is that as you proceed relative to the vaccine, as of today, I believe that the county has done an excellent job. We have over 14,000 vaccinations that have been given. About 2/3 of those are first time, with the other 3rd being first and second time. Dr. Washington was very kind to offer to do a public service announcement to encourage people to get the vaccine. If any of you would like to set up a time with media to do a public service announcement to encourage people to take the vaccine, just let us know, and we will schedule it. What we do know is this. This pandemic is only going to find its end by what they call the herd immunity. And that's not a herd of immunity, it's the other kind of herd. It's all of us getting our shots. Ron, you have been following this very closely regarding how people sign up. Can you give the public any guidance at this point?
Right now, it's, it's limited to people 65 and older. It's starting next week, Wednesday, is they're going to move into the initial part of Phase 3, which involves teachers and people that are childcare providers in addition to everybody, you know, that hasn't been vaccinated in the earlier groups. And then in March, they'll be going further down that Group 3, which will get into more now of frontline workers, transit drivers, things like that. But, but until your group is opened up, you cannot register. But if, once your groups, like next week, Wednesday, those individuals that, that are care providers and, and teachers can in fact contact one of the, either the county, if they want to go to the county's agency, or Walgreen is, is given shots, they're authorized, they can contact any authorized provider and register with them.
Beyond that, we thank you all for your leadership and service. Mr. Attorney?
I do have a report. About a month ago, I shared with you information that I had gotten from the Realtor who represents the person who was interested in Fire Station Number 2 on Barn Street, and that they felt like they had their financing approved. Since then, I have gotten clarification from them that the financing has fallen through and that they are not able to consummate the sale and the deal. They therefore have forfeited their deposit, which was $6,302.50. What I want to just seek from council is authority to move forward. The person, as you recall, that bid was an upset bid of a previous bid. I've been in touch with that person. He says he's still interested in bidding. And I told him I wanted to just make sure council was still interested in selling. Additionally, I have shown it to one other person in last week who indicated that he wanted to talk to his wife and that if it worked out that he wanted it, it would be a cash offer. It wouldn't be any financing or whatever. And I've also told the gentleman who bid last time, did the initial bid, that there would only be two months. You couldn't get it financed, if you needed financing, you had two months to do it, or else your bid would be forfeited. We put that in writing. But again, I just want, I don't think council has changed your mind as far as wanting to market that and sell it. If not, I'll move forward and try to get another bid to bring back to you in the next month or so, unless I hear otherwise.
What do y'all think?
Continue forward.
Continue forward.
Thank you. Do you want to do the One City?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, One City, very quickly. One of the things that we stress is road safety. And you can see here some of our own personnel doing road safety training. You can also see one of our gentlemen wearing the One City shirts that we, and you can see somebody in the background from Florida back there with Florida Gator shirt on. But every month, the street department does a great job in doing training. Your street department was also involved in one of the next slides that's going to come up in a minute regarding the boats. But your street personnel, obviously, they're the paving crew, they're the, they're the maintenance crew, just outstanding work on what they do in training, please. Now, let's talk about your first vessel. Sitting there on the dirt, where the dirt was shown, used to be a 36-foot-long boat. And this past Monday morning, your street crew showed up with our dump trucks, and they dismantled this vessel. At the end of the day, while we have now dismantled 140 vacant and dilapidated houses, we have now dismantled our first vessel. And I want to thank the street department for doing it. The total cost, other than the fact that we have equipment and personnel, the total cost at the landfill was less than $500. Now, we don't know how many of these we can do. But when y'all adopted, I'm sorry, y'all is not a proper term. When the mayor and council adopted the ordinance about vacant, dilapidated, abandoned vessels, one of the concerns you had was, how much is it going to cost us to get rid of each one of them? I think we can show you now that at least those on land, we have found a way. And if you feel comfortable, we're going to proceed with several of those in the background back there. You know, you will begin to see those disappear one or two a month until we have really cleaned up a number of these. So given the cost, are you still comfortable with us moving forward with removing these?
Sure. Thing I heard was, I understand the skipper and Gilligan were looking for their old buddies. Younger folks here didn't understand.
Younger folks here didn't understand that. But I knew you and John would understand that.
Absolutely.
And Ron.
But the professor gave out a roadmap, and Mrs. Howden Thurston is standing at the Ritz Carlton.
Great work by the street department. You know, they continue to make us proud and help us move the city forward in getting itself clean and positive. So well done. That concludes my...
On Thursday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one, during the Chamber of Commerce Annual Business Meeting and Award Ceremony, our own Dr. Richard Woodruff received the prestigious Civic Honors Award. This recognition is well-deserved, and I know I speak for the council and all of the staff when I say we are honored to have Dr. Woodruff serving as our city manager.
As I said then, I accept that on behalf of five hundred and sixty-three employees who go out and do the work every day. I accept it on behalf of the six of you, because y'all set the atmosphere that makes this a successful operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we're going to make a motion to go into closed session at this time. But moved? We're back in our regular session, and no action taken during the closed session. So I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now.